Well, I think, I hope that if I do it in a way that's just done this place for all of you guys to be honest with me, we're hoping to accomplish it formally and so it's always, always, always a challenge. But now we're having to give it to the people.
Um, so the purpose of that question was, um, we found the self-podding kind of language and that there is, there is space for this group to talk about. If you wish to, um, allow for, and probably just come from a site, I think it's going to be difficult. So if, if there's a situation that ultimately has those, um, passive ordinance that allows for, kind of marijuana or self-choke laws, is there interest in seeing them, like, for far ordinance being spaced a certain amount of time apart? Um, the argument for that, I heard the argument about already being a little more, the argument for that would be to, um, kind of prevent a, a growth. That there is, we, we, so the idea is simply to not create a section of town that is, can you say what the reason that it was happening on?
Right.
And the last part of the other thing today, um, I think that our plan, trying to help the students to get the data to work for us, to have it support back, just when the thing that we, our, our zoning land is so, to go in and try to amend, to, 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 to overlay them in a, 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 a grower or choke law or manufacturer, would very easily be able to actually, um,
Order, thank you. Um, can I have you at ten minutes, please?
Mrs. Dergan, Mrs. Giftos?
Here.
Mrs. Glennon?
Here.
Mr. Gill?
Ms. Catalonis?
Here.
Ms. Layton?
Here.
Mrs. Seider?
Here.
Ms. Ms. Pauls?
If you could join me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, four point O, the mic is a workshop, four point one, the district progress, um, CNA district and building goals, as well as the ESSA project proposals for ESSA.
All right, I'll kick us off tonight. Um, are we good to just speak this way? I think this will, these mics will pick up.
They should.
I think so.
Since we don't have a big crowd. Pass the mic down the line if we'd like. Um, so we're really excited to share with you our end of year progress update. Um, tonight, we are going to accomplish a couple of things. We're going to review our progress on our district goals and the, um, individual specific building goals. Uh, you'll have a chance to hear from every member of the leadership council tonight about the work that we've been doing. Um, we're going to celebrate some of our successes and also begin to identify some next steps. This is always an exciting time of year for our school and district leaders. Although people think we're on vacation, we're not. We're actually reflecting and, um, doing some strategic planning and really thinking about how we build, um, the work that we, the progress we accomplished in the current year as we start to think forward to the next year. And then Monique is also going to provide an update on our Every Student Succeeds Act application. Those are our federal grant applications and you'll hear how that's going. We'll probably go ahead and present all the way through so you can hear how we have progressed as a whole leadership team, um, and, and school community. And then we can ask questions, answer questions at the end. So if you want to jot as we go or whatever strategy works best for you, that'll help us stay on track and make sure that we can get through the whole presentation. Any questions about our objectives before we get started? Hearing none. Um, so you know, I like to always start with our mission. And I know Kelly Crosby thinks I'm going to say, we've all sat at that wobbly table. Um, but actually I have new props. I don't have to use the digital table anymore because now I have, um, this little carpet to add to the table metal metaphor and, you know, thinking about the carpet as the community that supports our school system. And remember the old tables? Some people thought it had three legs, but in fact it had?
Four.
Mission, vision, values and goals. Um, my new table that I have now not only has those four legs and yes, stable, sturdy, even, strong, it also has these connected pieces, um, in the middle, which I think of that as being the leadership team, the school board, uh, the building leaders, and the work that we do to bring all of these components together, that foundation, our mission, vision, values and goals, to make sure that we have a really sturdy foundation. And this is where, this is the work, this is where the work rests, right? On this strong foundation. And we ask ourselves as we set goals, we ask ourselves as we make decisions, does this align to our mission? Does this get us one step closer to our vision, that type of school district that we're trying to become? And does it align to our values? Is this what we say we believe in, um, and what matters most? And then of course, does it help us accomplish our goals? Um, so that's the mission, vision, values. We let, we rest our work upon that. And now even, I have little chairs and so you can think about our students sitting around this work because really that's what it's all about, right? And I used to like to think of them on the table as well, but it makes more sense that they're around this work that we do. That's why we exist. That's our fundamental purpose.
And it was good practice for our leadership team to, uh, have the table. They gave Julie the table yesterday.
Yes, sir. This is just a little gift.
She's always been gathering.
She really enjoyed her gift. I haven't even showed it to Ava yet. And so I remind you again of our mission. We like to, you know, orient ourselves around this every time we come together because what we really want to make sure is that this doesn't just become something that's on our website or something we put at the bottom of our letterhead, but that it's something that we actually live and breathe, um, and believe each and every day. So I won't read it to you because I bet you all could close your eyes and recite it. Monique, would you like to?
We practiced yesterday.
And Monique had it with ninety-nine percent accuracy. And then of course our vision, and this is, this really becomes our strategic plan. And this has been the strategic plan in the district for a number of years, well before I came to Scarborough. Um, we've organized it around these four themes to make it more memorable and make it more tangible so that it has meaning and value to everyone in the organization, not just the person who loves the table metaphor. Um, and so we have our four strategic themes and, um, really some of the work that, if, if I were going to give a, a next step in terms of making sure this really is a strong foundation, is that values work and really coming together as a whole community and talking about what are our beliefs. Um, we have some values that we used to be, you know, we named that as our student center vision. Um, we've rebranded that as our, as our values, but we need to check back in on that regularly, particularly, um, in, in a community where people are coming in and out of the community on an annual basis. And so that would be one suggestion I would have to just make sure that that table is nice and strong and not wobbly.
I know. So our first goal this year was to establish an improvement process. And the connection to this in our strategic improvement targets under the strategic theme of effective, um, teaching and learning is that continuously monitoring effectiveness of student-centered decisions by examining student growth data. Right there?
Yep.
So what we did this year was we established a district-wide improvement process. And this really, this is a goal that's a multi-year goal. So next year we'll be enhancing this, um, improvement process. So this year there were three key focus areas that as a leadership group and with staff, we looked at attendance and truancy, we looked at the start times and streamlined the bus runs, and then there was the K-12 professional development redesign, which we will talk about in more detail.
And I would just add, these aren't the only things that we were improving this year, but in, you know, when you're setting really smart, when you're setting smart goals, you want to try to be specific and hone in on some areas, um, with the intention of really getting your processes down so you can scale it, kind of, scale it up across the district.
So what we learned in next steps, so we found that, oh, you know, our conversations were grounded in evidence. If you think about our Every Student Graduates Committee, we looked at the profiles of students. When we looked at our CNA, we looked at data and had conversations around that. And we've really seen this increase in data-driven decision-making. Um, creating all of those data overviews made it a lot easier for people to look at data. And we really do need to collect good data in order to, um, be more effective with it and periodically check in on data to progress monitor to make sure as you're in your cycle that you're checking in. Um, timelines for improvements need to be reviewed to be project or task dependent. That, you know, when you're just looking at data, you want to make sure that you're also then having outcomes, not only analyzing it. So in our, um, attendance and truancy work this year, through a lot of research that we did and looking at our attendance data, we found that we were just coding it excused or unexcused. So it's really hard to get to the root cause analysis unless we have it coded. Why are students absent? Um, at different schools, the protocols and expectations were different. And not everybody is really aware of the importance of attendance. So.
Well, and just to take it back one step, um, before we talk about next steps, this was an area that we honed in on because of the, the new, um, ESSA reporting expectations. And we knew that the state was supposed to begin reporting on attendance and truancy. And when we looked at our data through the comprehensive needs assessment process or the CNA process, we noticed that we had a chronic absenteeism problem. Um, in fact, it was much higher than we had anticipated. And we started making lots of assumptions about why those numbers were so high in the double digits, um, at some of our phase levels. And so then what we, we knew, we needed to actually study this before we even get to the improvement, right? Because you have to first understand, and that's that whole data improvement process, is looking at the data before we get right to solutionitis and trying to solve the problem. We had to deeply understand that.
And so next steps, um, we started to code it this last quarter and building secretaries did that in spreadsheets. So we'll be analyzing that next week. But for the next year, we, in our Power School, um, program, the coding will be in there. So we'll be able to do it through our SIS. And with student-centered communications, we learned that it's very important that your communications are student-friendly, that they, um, are not too harsh because you're trying to draw students into school. It needs to be a welcoming, um, place to be within with the communications. And so we will be working on letters, communications, um, district-wide.
Can I ask a question? Uh, in the Power School, when you code that, will the pa, the family, the student, the parent be able to access that, the coding?
They'll get, not directly, not like the grade book. It, it, it sits in that database. We could look into generating reports, periodic reports on that.
So they would see excused and unexcused.
Yeah, well, we report on report cards are just excused and unexcused. If students are at grade six through twelve, they could go into their, in the grade book. I don't know that we're going to be using the co, new codes or just excused and unexcused. In check with Phil.
It just might be interesting for those who are excessively absent for the, for the family to see that same information and say, oh, I didn't realize it was that much, that, you know, this was causing that much of a problem.
It's a great idea to include a report with the letters for the communications. Um, and, and just to illuminate the issue, when we say excused, unexcused, basically anything is excused so long as a parent calls. But what we wondered was, is it excused because it's vacation? Is it excused because it's illness? Is it a school avoidance? Is it, is there some other chronic problem, um, or concern that we couldn't be intervening or supporting the family better?
Thank you.
So we will, we will be digging into the data to really try to identify those root causes.
So start times, um, I think we're all aware of why we would be studying start times. But just for those who might be picking up just now, um, we did implement, uh, a new start time schedule for three out of four of our phase levels last year. Um, and more, um, and also with that, we went from two bus runs to three bus runs. So the issue that we had with three bus runs was that, um, we were never able to get our K-two students to school on time. Um, and in fact, there was even confusion around what times K-twos actually started because they, they were never able to be there on time. They're the only phase level whose start time did not change this year. Um, and so we took those three bus runs and we merged them into two bus runs. And what that has allowed us to do, um, is to be more efficient. Um, our buses are fuller. That was also some, um, comments we would often hear from the community is why do I see empty or half-full buses, you know, driving around? So now that no one is saying that now, um, or at least I haven't heard that. So, um, we're able to use our resources more efficiently with the, the two bus runs and students are arriving to school on time. Um, we started opening doors twenty minutes prior because with the two bus runs, that means you have two phase levels, um, starting and ending at the exact same time and recognizing that parents can't be in two places at once. Um, we needed to have a little bit of flexibility, um, so that, um, has allowed for parent drop-off convenience. Breakfast sales, um, we have noticed from beginning of year to mid-year that breakfast sales have increased. We're still waiting for end of year numbers to really analyze that deeply and see, is it meals or is it just à la carte? Um, but the numbers were trending upward, um, throughout the year. And we learned that we need two morning CTE bus runs. So in the beginning of the year, the original plan before the compromise was to only go to Pats in the afternoon and, or I'm sorry, go to only Westbrook in the morning and then go to Pats and Westbrook in the afternoon. But with the compromise, we weren't able to do that. So we had to go to Pats both in the morning and in the afternoon, Westbrook both in the morning and afternoon. We tried it with one bus in the beginning of the year. That did not work because of just traffic. Um, both students weren't able to get to, um, their, both schools on time. We then piloted mid-year, um, having two morning runs. And, um, that worked out really, really well if and when we had drivers available. So whoa, that is definitely something we learned in our planning for next year. So next steps, we need to continue to assess as new bus stops are added due to our increased enrollment, as new, um, developments come online. Uh, we'll continue to study this. We also brainstormed some new ideas for K-five coverage during that twenty-minute window. Some, um, schools had a hard time with like, uh, ed techs being able to collaborate with their teachers or teachers being able to collaborate with each other before the school day would start because folks needed to be on duty during that time. And we want to continue to promote school breakfast. We would like to be the place where kids come for breakfast. That will really help us financially, but also ensure that all students have a balanced meal to start their day off right.
Can I, can I just ask on school start times, are, are those things working well, the, the twenty minutes prior and the two runs, um, versus three runs?
Don't talk about the runs.
I'll talk about the runs. I think yes.
Were we going to go through the presentation?
Oh, oh, did I miss that?
Yeah.
I probably was zoned out, so, thank you.
All right, we'll hold that thought. Bus runs and twenty minutes, because I like the principles to weigh in on the twenty minutes.
Oh, I remember, write it down.
Yep.
Yep, okay, so, um, on PLTs, uh, last year there was a P, uh, PD redesign, K-12 committee that got together and helped look at our model and so forth. And, uh, along the year, we surveyed, uh, our staff to see what, uh, they thought. And, uh, some of the things that we learned, that the staff valued the autonomy and the flexibility that the new design gave them. Um, instead of doing one big celebration like we did in the past at the high school, each school did their own celebration at the end of the year and teachers seemed to like that. And at the end of the year, seventy-five, seventy-nine percent of the staff said that the length for late starts was just right. What are our next steps? We are bringing the K-12 redesign team back together in August with the same facilitator that they had last year who had worked with them, Suzanne Godin, and to analyze the, uh, data. Um, we are considering how to share the PLT celebrations district-wide and publicly so that we can, um, so people can see the good work that our staff has done. And, um, we're going to look at the frequency of the meetings for PLT. That was something that came up that maybe we could meet a little bit more, maybe add another PLT time, but we're, we're looking at that. And so this is the, uh, data that we collected as the baseline in the beginning. And as you can see, at the beginning, we had two hundred, uh, excuse me, one hundred and twenty-four responses. The blue identified that the time, the length of the time on Wednesdays for the blue was just right. The red was too long and, uh, the gold was too short. That was the baseline in the beginning. We again, in mid-year, um, sent a survey to our staff. At that time, we had a hundred and eight responses. And it was at seventy-one thinking it was just right, twenty-four point one, too short. And as, um, the red got smaller, it looks like, um, for too long. At the end of the year though, we were very pleased with the responses. Two hundred and fourteen, uh, staff responded. And seventy-nine percent said that the length of time on Wednesdays was just right. And fifteen percent said they'd like to have a little bit more. So, um, and look, that data will be shared with our PD redesign team so that we can go forward and, um, design our next year's model.
So this was just one of several questions.
Yeah.
We chose to highlight this question because if you remember through the budget process, we had talked about, should we just round those late starts up to two hours to be consistent that late starts are always two hours? Um, and there was some concern about the impact that would have on families if we did that. And so this really doesn't support the need for it either. So that can be just another affirmation, um, in that decision that was made.
I'm going to talk a little bit about goal number two. Goal number two for the district, uh, was around organizing for collaborative work. It focuses on step one of the data-wise improvement process and it really is preparing your organization, thank you, preparing your organization, uh, to be able to manage and discuss data, draw conclusions and take action. And so what we did was we established a common agenda format. Um, I think you're familiar with the common agenda format, but it's not just a common agenda format. It also includes protocols and key, um, activities that need to take place during the course of a meeting in order to ensure effectiveness. So there are some common norms, but it's, there's also identifying the objectives, like why are we meeting? What's our purpose? What do we want to accomplish to make sure that those meetings are valuable to all members? It also includes capturing those notes, but also checking in at the end, how'd this meeting go? What went well? What, what do we need to think about changing next time? Uh, we implemented that. We actually, we modeled that across the district, across all schools and across all sorts of different cross-phase level, within-phase level, uh, groups. We also conducted a data inventory. This is part of that organization piece. What assessments are you using? Where are they? What grade levels? What are they assessing? How long do they take? How much do they cost? Where does the data go? Where does the data come from? What format is it in? So we began to take a look at that across each phase level. Uh, the other piece that we worked on was a, um, a data analytics tool. One of the frustrations that we heard as we were doing the data inventory was access, the ability to access the data, but also to manipulate the data. Very often it lived in different, um, places. We also needed to research a universal screener, which is a mandate we have by law in terms of assessing, to identify students who may be potentially at risk in the area of literacy or mathematics. So what did we learn? We learned that meetings do need some protected time. We can't just squeeze them in here and there. We do need to protect the time in order to have conversations in and around the data. One agenda format may not meet all those needs, uh, and we need to continually reflect on that process. So we're going to revisit the agenda format. We're going to continue to provide, um, meeting training and how to facilitate, um, how to use that common format. Uh, we're also going to take a look at our data inventory. Um, one of the things we did was we contracted for a data analytics tools, Performance Matters, and we spent the year getting that ready, getting that launched, having the data input and started the initial training. And we have plans moving forward, um, to continue with that, enrolling that out. We also researched and did identify a, um, new universal screener, um, referred to as iReady. It will replace the STAR assessment. Uh, and we're getting ready to provide the training. We've got training lined up in our summer calendar. Uh, and that training isn't going to be a one and done. It is going to also It is going to also be, take place in October and then later on in January. And that's really about not just implementing the assessment, but what do we do with the data? And how do we plan for our students? So that will be ongoing work. And I just went backwards. Allison Marques.
Thank you. So the third goal for the district was really built from the comprehensive, comprehensive needs assessment, specifically in those bulleted items up there were areas that we needed improvement in. So goal three was looking, having the phases. Pick a specific problem of practice and dive deeper into SMART goals, which they're going to report out on. But in all of these areas, we have done some very focused work. The social-emotional curriculum, Jessica has been leading up a K-5 committee, looking at some best practices, some programs, and that's moving forward. Monique just talked about the database and looking at Performance Matters and how that's coming along. The absenteeism, we spoke about that. But also part of the halftime, the social worker position at the high school is dedicated to that school avoidance component, which is connected to the truancy. So we're going to hear from K-5, middle school and high school now on their specific SMART goals in these areas, in some of these areas. And I think, I'm not sure which one of you?
So K-5 has a research-based guaranteed and viable literacy and mathematics curriculum that we share. So the scope and sequence is really smooth and clearly articulated. And we know exactly what our students are entering Wentworth with. And they know exactly what they are preparing for. So it's this really fantastic context and really supports students. So we decided, we just finished our fifth year with units of study for writing. And last year, and so over the course of the year, we set a SMART goal around those writing outcomes for students. So you can see what the specific student-based goal was that we, that we set. And it was great to collaborate K-5. So the student growth expectations are there. But we also, given in our plan, we also included time for the student narrative writing to be scored and analyzed by grade, grade-like teacher teams. And so an additional outcome of this goal was professional development and collaboration opportunities for staff. The indicator that we used was the narrative rubric from the writing units of study. So that's a very evidence-based tool. And Anne, I believe, is going to talk a little bit about exactly what we did. Right after you, look at some cute pictures of our kids doing great work in writing. So it starts in kindergarten and really builds on up through. And it's pretty remarkable, the growth that they show over that short amount of time and what hard workers they are, the stamina that they develop.
So I'm actually going to share with you what we did. So we had, as Kelly mentioned, the K-5 collaboration was really quite special. We, I don't know historically how often there was a K-5 goal, but we felt strongly as school leaders when we talked about this at the beginning of the year in August, that this, this should be a K-5 emphasis. So we had professional development times together, which was unique. And all of us putting our energies into this actually helped to move the needle for our, for our writing scores. Some of the things that we did through that collaboration is really focus on understanding and using the rubric. So when you look at a rubric, you really need to understand what the scores mean. Everyone needs to be on the same page, so that's what the calibration piece is about. We also used anchor samples. So teachers spent time at curriculum meetings and their teacher release time and, and in their professional learning teams on a late start Wednesdays, really going deeply into that rubric to better understand it. Once teachers knew where students were, then they can pick the most effective strategies to move them along and provide interventions for students who need that. And so towards the end of the year, we were able, our coaches really helped to develop an intervention document. And so that was provided to all staff. And teachers and a lot of PLTs actually started to be able to use that, that document, which was really exciting. Some of the things that came out of this that we weren't going into it thinking were connecting these interventions to our academic support programs and the RTI process. And a really fun thing that happened was the implementing of math journaling. We think of math problems, but we don't think about writing about math. And so that happened in a number of classrooms. Teachers were really excited to adopt that. And at Wentworth in particular, they started to look at writing and allied arts and integrating writing in there. So it wasn't just about the rubric and it wasn't just about the scores. We really looked across our programming to see where could we implement more strategies and interventions with writing. It was fun.
And more nice pictures of kids. So, so the last slide here is of course what we learned in our next step. So the good news is, the amazing news is, is that we met our goal of 90% of students demonstrating growth. Most kids grew to a scale score as well, although not, not as many as we would have liked. But it's, it was good to get the data, collect the data for the first time the way we did comprehensively K-5 and really analyze it and be able to look at and see what our next steps will be based on that data. The calibration and collaboration was a huge value to everybody. Again, it's the opportunity for K-5 to, to meet and have these opportunities is, is not all that common and, and frequent. So this was important. And it really does help to have, especially that second to third grade where they're not in the same building at all, talk and meet and, and see what the next sort of phase needs from us. And, and then the writing intervention strategies was very helpful. So sort of an if-then document. So if a child is doing this in their writing or is not doing this in their writing, then what do we need to do to help them? So it was a very functional document. It really helped. And then our next steps are to, obviously to increase, better understand how to grow a student on a scaled score dimension as well as just in the, the raw data. And sort of the, the rubric gets a raw score and then you get a scaled score. So we really want that scaled score to go up as well. And continue the PD on the data-informed instruction. And grow our, our writing interventions as well, so over, over time. So it's, it's all good. Very pleased with how well our kids write and they, it's just amazing to see. Those of you with, the young children especially, you know what they come home being able to do, which is just remarkable. And, you know, it's not about the spelling being perfect. It's not about the handwriting itself being perfect. It's about getting ideas down on paper and it's remarkable, all the things that they can do.
So at the middle school, we had two goals. The first, which is outlined here, was really a major piece of our work this past year. And so we really wanted to close the loop on the reporting and communication problem that we had identified last year at this time. And the way in which we did that was through the consistent development and use of a student reporting system that was easily accessible to everyone. For you. So what we did, gosh, we did a whole lot. And as we were trying to figure out what goes on a slide, one slide, it's, it's kind of hard to distill it all down. But we redesigned the reporting tool that was used for parents. That happened in part because we were able to send a team of three people to Power School University last summer to do some research about how could we build a tool that more accurately reflected what we wanted it to? And so that was a really great use of professional development. We also convened a wide body of representative folks from the middle school to create a reporting and scoring guide that was used with our teachers. It was shared with students and it was also sent out to all families so that it really became, here's how we do business with grading and reporting at the middle school. We provided updated training in Power School for all teachers in that crossover to the zero to 100 grading system. And then also provided on an ongoing basis, support for teachers in Power Teacher Pro and in Google Classroom so that as the year was unfolding and, you know, we were getting ready for that first quarter report card, like what were the things that we needed to check and, and so on and so forth. And so that was ongoing. And then finally, a step that we had done more at the beginning, but we did do a big rollout in terms of the grading guide and overview meeting for parents. And then made all of that information available on our school website as well. So again, really just trying to be as transparent and bringing everybody along as much as we could. This spring, we solicited feedback again from parents, students and staff in a very similar way to we had done last year. And a couple of the key questions that we wanted to find out were around, was the new grading system more easily understood? And you can see across all of our stakeholders, it definitely seemed that way. That parent percentage, when we did the parent survey, we, that was not a question that obviously our sixth-grade parents answered because they wouldn't have had that comparison, right? So we sent out one survey for seventh and eighth-grade parents who could draw a comparison to our previous system and then a different one for our sixth-grade parents. But you can see overwhelmingly, parents, students and staff felt like the new grading system was more easily understood. And in a similar fashion, folks really felt strongly that the new grading system better communicated what students knew and were able to do. Those were the goals that we had outlined at the beginning of that transformation. And so it was really reaffirming to see that those efforts kind of met what our outlined goals were. In addition to that, there were some overall survey themes across all of the surveys. And I've kind of outlined them here. Again, like the data from some of the statistical questions showed, some of the narrative feedback themes also reinforced that the current, our new system is more clear and understandable. Across all groups, people felt like students, their perception was that students were more motivated with the system that we're now using. That was a big question last year when we had done the original surveys. And so the perceptions across all stakeholders is that that has improved. It was interesting to us that we had a much lower response rate this year. Last year, we had 53% of parents. This year, we had 17%. I have my own wonderings about that. I think when people aren't happy, we hear from them a lot. When people are feeling super satisfied, we hear from them much, much less frequently. So we can, you know, take that as a potential answer to that question. The narrative comments also indicated that both parents and students would benefit from more training on how to use Power School, how to read that. And so we're really doing some thinking in, you know, other than a back-to-school meeting where we're taking you through that, what are some other modules that we might create? Like whether those be like little video snippets that we could have online? Like are you looking to know how to do this? Click here. So that it wouldn't be maybe as overwhelming as a one-shot parent meeting or perhaps we have more meetings. I know people like to have lots of different ways to receive information. We also had some wonders specifically from our staff surveys about setting limits on retakes or reassessments. And also some wonders in regards to that crossover. Because if you remember, our new system kind of marries standards with the zero to 100. And we had followed something that had been previously in place that exceeds was 97 to 100. And we got some feedback this year that perhaps that is too rigorous and difficult for students to achieve. So that's, was another wonder that came out. So overall, we learned that this was an extremely positive change for the middle school. That was super consistent by all of our groups. And I would also definitely add the value of taking all of that stakeholder feedback into account in a really thoughtful process. That was a big plus. Our next steps, again, were just refining the reporting guide with a little bit, a few tweaks based on some of those wonders on the previous slide. We're considering specifically amending some of the reassessment guidelines and exceeds percentages and looking to create more opportunities to educate parents and students. So we're feeling like everybody really dug in deeply. There were efforts on every person's part, but we're really feeling like it was time well spent. Our other, our second goal was really around, we have been working for a couple of years on making sure that our curriculum units reflected what was happening in our classrooms. And so in regards to that, this past year, our teachers really focused on ensuring that curriculum units had consistent criteria of multiple pathways. And specifically really starting to look at making sure that those exceeds components or opportunities were built into assessments. I think historically, and not just here in Scarborough, right? But as educators look to figure out, how do I show that a student exceeds a standard? I think historically, people have said, well, we'll give them something extra to do over here. Or maybe if you answer number 10, you know, and you're willing to do that, that might help to show that. And, and we're really trying to reframe the thinking on that and embedding that into assessments so that it kind of doesn't become a student choice, whether or not you want to try to exceed. And so our content area groups really focused their efforts in reexamining those existing unit templates and learning goals and really focused on setting progression scales. I can give you a great example. So our eighth-grade science teachers, as they were taking a look at curriculum this year and wanting to have multiple pathways. At the start of the year, they were realigning all of their assessments and they came up with kind of three different levels of assessments, right? That would, that would get at the same information, but then, you know, perhaps the, you know, number three assessment was really for the high flyers who were exceeding the standards. And the number one assessment was a more basic level entry. And so the teachers said, we're going to have these three assessment types available and we're going to let the kids self-select which one they think is the match for them. Well, guess what they found out? What they found out was that, believe it or not, 13 and 14-year-olds are not always going to push themselves to the furthest limit. And so as they continued to redevelop those, what they said was, what we found out was, we need to have more say in that process and we'll decide who needs some differentiated assessments more so. And, and they, and they made that transition about halfway through the year. And they really found that students were, they were getting a better read on what students' abilities were because the students who might not have been selecting a more difficult assessment were really rising to the occasion and showing that they had that learning. But it was also great to see that there was some differentiation available so that even students who were really at the place where they were focusing on entry-level learning goals could still demonstrate and feel successful about the work that they were doing. So our next steps in terms of that goal is really to continue that thinking around expanding the number of pathways that are available to our students. Because at the end of the day, we really want to make sure that there's this equity of opportunity for students to be able to help us to show what they know and are able to do in regards to assessment.
The high school people had other, some other commitments and so Mike should be here, but he was involved with interviews, so I said I would start off until he could get here. So at the high school, the goal this year was to look at their curriculum work and the curriculum documents to be written in a format that would include unit descriptions, standards and learning goals and, and that was one of the recommendations from the S. They were working towards this in their groups, their monthly department meetings, their teacher design team. Time was devoted to completing this work and having conversations and collaborating with that and I think that it was a valuable time for them to be able to do this. And what they learned from their, from their work is that to allow, they learned that they need to start off right from the beginning because it gives them, allows them to have a whole year to complete this work. Some of the things, they had other things to do or they waited a couple, a month or so and so this will give them, this is what they learned, that we should start right from the beginning. Use of department meetings and teacher design time has been the efficient use of time working towards these goals and it was very valuable. The ability to collaborate with course-like teachers has been effective in that meaning that they tried this year to have some teachers have common prep time together so that during the day, they could meet and discuss things and teach and design in their department meetings. So it gave more of a collaboration approach to, at the high school. The next steps, by 2020, next, next June, that they will have learning targets, guiding principles will be added to their unit plans. There were key themes that they are looking at and still doing that collaboration. And then the following year, their plan is to have instructional strategies and assessment practices that will include specific criteria that can be measured for their plans. But it's, it's a lot of work and this was the beginning of their work, of the collaborative work to be done with course-like teachers, with department meetings and so forth and putting that structure in where everyone was to participate.
If I could add a little bit, I just spent today with K-12 Social Studies and yesterday with K-12 Science and as we were working within the curriculum guide, the links to all of the courses at the high school are there with unit maps and course calendars and all of the unit maps aren't filled out because what the high school decided to do is do it methodically so they have all of stage one completed for all of their courses at the high school and then they're going to be working. They set it out as a three-year goal to complete those units by the end of three years. So next year, they're going to continue on and work on those essential questions and pieces, but they have managed across about seven hundred courses at the high school that we offer to get that work completed this year, which is pretty significant work.
So grading and reporting.
There's the man of the hour.
Yeah. Yeah. So by the end of this year, the high school looked at their goal two, which was grading and reporting and will complete the improvement cycle with a focus on grading and reporting. That was their goal for goal two. And what did they do? They created, it was a created a new policy on grading and reporting that was developed by an improvement process. Surveyed students, staff and parents, great school partners helped with some small group discussions. Departments worked on best practices as a department and letters were sent to students, families and school board, June tenth, two thousand nineteen. So I think it was a collaborative approach in looking at that, getting information, getting feedback, getting, and I know that through this year, Monique, Kathy, Julie, Allison and myself met with the I L T group once a month and I've had some of those discussions along the way. So what did we learn? There was overwhelming support for a credit-based diploma. Create a diploma that was accessible to all students, twenty-four credits went to twenty-two credits, made it more manageable. Look at multiple pathways and opportunities to demonstrated achievement and guiding principles embedded in each course and credit recovery options. I think that for me is an important piece in that having those options built into a class was important. And the next steps, implementation of the new policy, student support services will monitor the progress and every student graduates committee will monitor the progress also. I think that committee has some work to do in getting student advocacy people involved with them. They're starting to, they're like a beginning, but I think in going forward that that needs to probably have more work in getting that done.
I think I'm up to bat.
Yep.
Mike, did you want to add anything?
Those tabs, if you go back a few, those were some examples, if you want to click on one real quick.
I don't know how. Thanks, Jordan.
Nope. These were, when they were working on some of the things they were working on, these were examples of some of the things that they agreed on as a department that they would do, these just different examples. These were as a whole high school, some of the things they talked about. And then if you go back, I can go back a few slides, there was another, click on, just show you real quick, keep going back.
The list of courses.
Keep going. Right there. That was an example of like, this is, for example, the Spanish worked on, this is their plan for delivering their curriculum through units for the course of the year. So if you click on, for example, unit one, that will break down their individual unit plan with their learning outcomes and if you scan down that a bit, it will show that as they go through their year two, they'll put in, you know, their different key learnings and, and their plan as they go through. So each of, that's an example of what each of the departments worked on too, to break down their different unit plans for the, for the year.
And for those of you that are on the curriculum committee, or actually all of you that are on the curriculum guide, Monique's presentation, so that, this is like plugging away. It's kind of like those.
Sorry, apologize for being late, we're finishing up some interviews.
Did you find somebody to hand it?
I did.
So one of the pieces, as I spoke to you before, was around the title funds. The federal government provides state, provides states monies to distribute to the schools and the way in which they organize those federal funds are around titles, what are called titles. Title one or Title one A, which is really focused on improving the academic achievement for disadvantaged youth. We receive funding there. Next year, our allocation is about a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Title two, we receive funding and that really is targeted toward professional development, but also in terms of preparing, training, recruiting, high-quality teachers and school leaders. The other title which we qualify is Title four, Twenty-First Century Schools. A portion of that may be allocated towards well-rounded education, which is a whole potpourri of different types of experiences we can provide to students, but then also safe and healthy schools is another piece of that. We allocate our funding towards those focus areas that Allison spoke of at the beginning and the purpose of these funds is not to supplant what local funding provides, but really to be supplemental in addition to. So we have some restrictions around some of those funds. For Title one A, we have to provide services for neglected homeless students. There's a family and parent engagement requirement there and then we also have to provide equitable services for eligible private schools and so Morrison Center is the private school who qualifies for some funding in around those pieces, although I don't think they have funding for Title one this year. They do qualify for Title two and Title four for a portion of our funding and they need with the Morrison Center and coordinate that. This year, as a result of our free and reduced lunch numbers from our April first count, the Wentworth School will receive the Title one funding and looking at our focus areas and our data in and around writing, we decided to focus on writing and social emotional learning. So at this point, we are proposing in our grant application, the funding of a one-point O F T E writing support teacher to add to the literacy support staff at Wentworth so that this person would focus on improving student writing in the school. So for those students who are struggling in writing, they would receive services from this staff person. In terms of social emotional learning, we're looking at a support staff position, an ed tech three position, who can help out with some of those students and work with some of our students who are on learning plans in the area, social emotional area, it could be behavior plans, it could be all sorts of things as those kiddos are working on improving some of those skills. Title two A, we're going to allocate that towards a leadership academy. That is that opportunity that the Greater Sevago Alliance has provided us and with the successful referendum, we get to continue to play with those districts and get, while this will cost some money, it won't cost the full price because of that shared services model. So some of this money, it will be about thirteen thousand dollars is our total allocation for this year and some of that will go towards supporting the leadership academy. The other pieces will go to provide professional development for our teachers and staff in the area of social emotional learning. Also is Title four in this area, we are, have decided and I've coordinated with the Morrison Center to put the funds in that category called safe and healthy students, which will help support professional development and some supplies, if we need supplies, for social emotional learning. What that looks like, we're using the CASL framework, the graphic is there on the right. That looks like our students' ability to be self-aware of their emotions and their actions, but also to self-manage themselves. It also includes social awareness as well as working on relationship skills and being a responsible decision-maker in our schools. So it will mostly professional develop, the bulk of that money will be professional development, but also some curriculum materials, but it can also support some special services like this year, the title funds went to bringing Dr. Brooks into the district to provide that for staff. That's the plan for the S of funds. Do you, you take lots of note for questions because we are now available for questions?
I have a couple. I, I appreciate what you guys said when you were talking about the chronic absenteeism issue and Julie was talking about the communication home and the templates that you guys are developing. To be sensitive with that because obviously, we don't want to shame kids who are trying to get to school through a letter and shame the parents and it's usually very significant barriers for why they might be not coming to school. So I really love that that's part of, part of that work. And I just also wondered, I didn't know what our, our philosophy was district-wide in terms of site visits. I didn't know if we did site visits to homes and if we did, if you guys could talk about that and, and the success, success of that or the challenges with that.
I can speak a little bit. Definitely, I think I'm aware of all schools have done a handful of home visits. Sometimes they, it's the school social worker and the resource officer might go together. One of the major roles of the new social work position will be to be going into the home to do that assessment, to develop that plan, to reengage that student, to do that more purposeful and focused. Yeah.
And I think one of the important things about the data though is that not all the absenteeism is kids who are sick or choosing to miss school for, you know, they don't want to be there, school avoidance, anxiety, things like that, a lot of it, especially out of my school in particular, are long-term family trips to very faraway places where it costs a lot of money to get there and you, you don't go for a week, you go for two months and trying to plan that around vacation times and school, when you're not in school is challenging, so.
And sometimes a site visit looks more like that a student has missed the bus and doesn't have transportation and that there's a chronic absenteeism challenge with the family. So, you know, we're doing what it takes to get that kiddo to school. So if that means sending the dare van with a friendly, familiar face from school to bring them on in, that's also an opportunity to just make that connection and, you know, it's, we really, really want you here, come on, get to school. Yep, we can get breakfast when we get there. So we do a fair bit of that as well.
I appreciate your comment about the reasons why students are out and I think that's where the coding, you being able to use Power School to do that. So if it's a medically excused absence, you can say that and trying to start to define, if it's a family trip, you can say that. If it's a college tour, you can say that. To try to define those reasons more succinctly, I think will be very helpful.
I think one of the big learnings for us as a team was really studying why attendance matters and realizing that although it might be something really valuable, like a family trip, we think there's lots of great learning outcomes that occur from that and, but understanding that that not only is it about that one individual student, but chronic, if a student's chronically absent, the impact that can have on their peers and the classroom culture because of, if Mike's out one week and I'm out a separate week and then Kathy's out and you never have full attendance, it's really hard to build that, that culture and that rapport in the classroom.
For the students that are out for the extended trips and I'm thinking of the folks that I work with that will go for six to eight weeks and they're going home, are the students sent with work to do so that they're keeping up or do they fall that far behind their peers?
Our policy is not to send work because it's almost impossible to replicate whole group instruction or small group instruction with family members far away from, from school. You know, the turn and talk, the pairs, the pair work, that, just the small group work, you can't replicate that somewhere else. We ask them to keep a journal of what they eat, who they visit with, what they see, where they go, because those are the enriching experiences that they want to remember and share when they come back. We ask them to read books, we ask them to, you know, write letters back to say what you're doing. So we ask them to do some things, but we really don't give them a packet of work because quite honestly, oftentimes, we don't know they're leaving with a lot of notice. So asking a teacher to suddenly get six weeks' worth of work ahead of time is not reasonable and realistic and so, yeah, and it's just, it's just impossible to replicate that. So then when they come back, we try to catch them up, our instructional coaches or our academic support folks, we may meet with them and sort of fill them in on some of the key things that they might have missed, especially like in the math curriculum.
I was going to say, it can be a little counterproductive to send six weeks' worth of math work that they attempted to do incorrectly and that causes frustration and actually it sets them back further than had they not, you know, attempted to struggle through it.
Or try to do it all in like two days.
Right, right. Oh, we're on the plane back, quick.
I think it was a great point that you made about having the attendance report attached to the communication with the family because I don't think people realize the impact of being out one or two days a month. That's two to four weeks of school over the year and so it, it would shed a different perspective when they took a look at it like that.
Well, I think about all the kids that do travel sports and vacations and so we have sort of the kids that are struggling and missing school and then we may have the kids that have the benefit of, of additional opportunities that may be impacting them and it, and it may not be a consideration for parents until they see them.
And I think, thinking about that too, with also the stress and anxiety level, our kids are very verbally expressing and clearly expressing in a lot of different ways, if not just verbally, but behaviorally and does that have an impact? Is there any correlation or causation between those two things? That's something we need to look really closely.
That, that's actually ties into one of my questions and that's how you're gathering that information because I wonder, you know, if it's a parent, if they're going to feel comfortable sharing it and if it's a child giving that information, how, you know, how they provide that information.
Do you mean about why they're absent?
Yeah, why they're absent. So how do you gather that?
So what we did was we actually tried to standardize it so that the secretaries across the district are asking things in a consistent way and if you take a look at the way that the truancy laws are written, like there are different categories of excused absences and so that is exactly what we're focusing on, right? So if somebody says we're on a vacation, then it's a vacation. If it's a medical appointment, that gets, you know, logged in for that. If it's, you know, an emergency family event, that's a different category. And so I think, you know, I know, I hear my receptionist asking folks, you know, at the middle school and I, and I think people are pretty comfortable in saying, you know, like she'll just say, oh, can I ask why he's out today? And a parent will, you know, disclose that. And a parent will, you know, disclose that, I, it's, it's really not even within something that I remember that parents were like, it's none of your business, right?
But it is so reported.
I was gonna say, I might say, oh, he's not feeling well today, thank you, and get off the phone, and then be like, put on your swimsuit, can it, like.
Yes, we have to.
I would never personally do that.
I think that's where we have to, like, assume positive intent.
Yeah, I was gonna say, our norm.
Working in the same direction to support students.
It's not going to be perfect, but it's better than absent, unexcused absence.
And as you know, that it's, it's very complicated, because what anxiety looks like in a little one, or even a big one, is, you know, I've got a tummy ache, or I've got a headache, right? And so there's a lot of layers of doing the due diligence at school and supporting them and having those caring adults, and just looking a little more deeply at that, and that takes a whole team approach.
I, I've, I've seen a lot of communication about the chronic absenteeism, but I haven't seen much communication about the data collection, and so I just think for myself, I might respond, I, I might care a little bit more about those questions if I understood why.
And that's part of the rollout, is next year, we haven't changed the coding system yet. In a formal way, so I think that, that when we send a letter and talk about attend, why attendance matters, maybe with a flyer or something next year, that's.
We can give deeper dit.
And I think it'd be helpful, too, for parents to know what those categories are, whenever you define them, because, like, I called the other day, and I said, Grace won't be in today, and they said, oh, is it a medical appointment? And I was like, um, yeah, sure, I mean, it was like an orthodontist appointment or something. So if I knew that you were coding it, I probably would take the time to be like, hey, Grace is out, she's, she's out for a medical appointment, do you know what I mean, like?
Yeah, that's good to know.
Yeah, giving that, like, common language.
It's the categories that is, are in our policy for excused absence.
Right, but when you talk about, like, even in your procedures at the beginning of the year, like, you know, here's what to do when your kid is sick, you can call, and here's all the reason, you know, here's our codes for why kids might be out, or.
Yeah, that would be good to put into our communications.
And I think another thing that the, the committee, the attendance and truancy committee has been talking about is how do we welcome students back after they've been out? So instead of being like, where have you been, you know, wow, we really missed you, we're so glad you're here, and a lot of our teachers already do that, and so that's a way for us to say, here's a really good practice that's.
And also, how do we acknowledge when they're making improvements, right? So we had some students who were having some attendance issues, and again, in planning with the family and figuring out what were the interventions that needed to be put in place, then we saw that, you know, the families had really improved in the ability to get the student to school, and I sent emails to students and to their parents, right, in those cases, because we, you know, have ongoing checks of that data, and the feedback that I got from a couple of parents was just like unbelievable, like, wow, thank you for noticing, you know, but again, that's how we keep people coming back and, and seeing that we really do all want to be one team and supportive.
Have you all discussed strategies for the K five level where we don't have Power School? Because this is a foreign concept to those of us who do not yet have a middle school student. So in terms of being able to code it on your end, I think that that's extremely valuable, but there's no access for parents at the K five level yet.
So there is, there is a, a nice handout that I've seen from Count Me In, where it's for a parent, and it says, has some data, and it has the nine days, because what research has shown is that achievement isn't really affected until you miss more than nine days. So it's for a parent to keep track themselves of the nine, you know, of every time they're absent, just so you know.
Right, I mean, because, I mean, just speaking from personal experience, you know, Ben's reporter came home, and I looked at it and said, oh, he only had one absence, like, I don't, I, we're busy, and like, but like, I was like, oh, he only missed one day this trimester, like, I would have thought in my mind that it was more. So, you know, I think those days add up quickly for a lot of parents.
That's exactly what the letter, that's what our letter says, but that's a little reactive, right, when it has become a problem, the letter's like, quite often, these absences add up without anybody recognizing, so just bringing it to your attention, you know, it's X many days, so that's kind of like the first letter, right, and then there's a progression from there, and so we do have it, like, in our handbook and those types of things, but I think that maybe we could do a better job highlighting that in the beginning of the year, and being more proactive about, you know, how those absences impact, especially, I think, the little ones, because it's hard to replicate, and I think that there's, we've talked a little bit about the, you know, oh, well, it's, it's just first grade, like, they'll be okay, but a lot happens in a day, a lot happens.
Including the habit of coming to school.
And that precedent.
Yeah.
There's a direct correlation.
And I think it's pretty mind-blowing to think, one day a month, you think, well, that's, that's pretty good attendance, right, you only miss one day a month, but that's needs to chronic absenteeism.
One is okay, but two?
I think that reminder over the course of the year, I think, is important, because
it is easy to lose sight of the absences, and then you look, and you're like, oh my goodness, they've been out seven times, and it's April. So like, just kind of shifting that mindset about what does it mean to be chronically absent, and just communicating that more often throughout the year, I think, would be helpful, in a positive way.
And I think, I think we try to be very positive about it, it's not, where is your child, it's, you know, are they okay? Because it's, a lot of times, it's just about safety, and are, and are they somewhere where they're supposed to be, and does someone know they're not here? So at different age levels, obviously, that's, that's different, but when we can't reach a parent at our level, that's concerning, because, you know, if your child comes to school and is sick and we can't reach you, what, you know, where do we go from there? It's different than older children who have a little bit more ability to tell you different phone numbers or different, you know, situations that are going on, so, you know, we really did a lot of work trying to just get ourselves coordinated and calibrated and, and thinking about it the same way, and it was fascinating to say, like, well, in the state law or Power School, I'm not even sure where the, the origin of it was, was, you know, if you miss three hours, if you're three hours late, that's an absence, not a tardy, you know, and those kinds of things, like, where does that line, where does it cross the line? Because we'll have kids that come in an hour late and leave two hours early, because they just happen to have appointments or whatever, you know, depends, and is that a full day of attendance, or is that only a part, you know, so there's, learning all of those nuances and the formulas of it so that we can all be consistent has been really important to me.
Can I ask a question about a different topic?
Yes.
So I, I have a question about the busing and the start time changes, and anecdotally, I'm hearing that there's far more parents K to A dropping their kids off at school in the morning, and I'm wondering if, if the principals have seen that in terms of, are more parents dropping off, so therefore, therefore, maybe busing isn't a problem, because there's not as many kids on the bus in terms of drop-offs?
Have you seen a difference in that?
I have not seen necessarily a huge increase in drop-offs.
So pretty much status quo, you think?
We have a ton of parents who drop off and pick up.
But they always have.
But that's always been the case, I think.
I would say, I don't have anything to compare it to, but it was not overwhelming, I mean, it was manageable drop-offs, and it's, you know, it's the same parents every morning, so.
I would say that our pickups have increased at Wentworth, because we're getting out a little later, and I think that parents are scrambling to get kids to where they need to be, because at our age, they're starting to do extra sports and lessons and those sorts of things, and dance, but I haven't noticed a big change in drop-offs compared to previous years. Have you done a reassessment at each of your building levels about how the start times are working, and whether people are? We've sort of been taking the lead. Has there been a reassessment, I guess?
Well, I think we've been, we've been asked, we, we talk about it on a regular basis, like, how are things going, and I think that K two, we haven't changed our start times, but technically, but officially, our, we have gained time, because our kids are actually in the building and where they're supposed to be on time, for the most part, so, you know, the kids that come in at eight fifty-five are now tardy, not just like, oh, go one day, it's okay, but I know that the, you know, we, so we, I feel like at Eight Corners, that we have gained instructional time, we are now able, this coming year, to start our special schedule for art, music, P E, those kinds of things, as early as nine o'clock, which we were nine fifteen this year, because you had to wait to make sure everybody was in and everybody could get in there, and even in a small school, I can't imagine having to wait for kids to walk to the end of the purple wing at Wentworth, it's a long way. So in that regard, I think it's been great, the balance on that is just the, sort of the, the large number of kids that are there for ten, it's not a long time, but ten minutes all together, we've got to figure, we, we at Eight Corners need to figure out something better and different for next year, and we're working on it, but it, it, you know, it's, it's great to have everybody where they're supposed to be when they're supposed to be there.
What about the schools who have, who changed times, like, I know you guys changed times pretty significantly.
So we changed by fifteen minutes, so it really has been pretty insignificant for us.
Okay, so you haven't noticed any difference?
It wasn't a major change for us in terms of the amount of minutes, it was just a change in the direction that we wouldn't have preferred, I think, had we had our druthers about it out of the gates, that wasn't, you know, it was kind of a late decision, and it wasn't what we had expected. But that all being said, there, we've realized a lot of benefits in having most of our kids there, at the same time, we are fortunate in our facility that we can accommodate that between recess and the cafeteria, so there's, the kids have benefited, their early arriving buses have benefited from additional recess time in the morning, so that's great, I think that we're really looking forward to having, hopefully, a fully-staffed transportation department next year, and that will improve things additionally, because we have a lot of buses, and some of them are shared with Eight Corners, so that was a little tricky on some days, but for the most part, it's been really pretty positive until the construction started on one fourteen at the end of the school year, so that was stressful.
Notice that now that school's out, they're not doing anything.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm throwing this tape. Paid the other day.
I was like, like Rachel going down the nice smooth road, I'm like, I guess the route one took care of that, though.
Bottleneck of air instead.
So I guess it sounds to me like the, the time itself didn't make as much of a difference as the fact that everybody was there and ready to learn at the actual start of school, is that? So I guess my question is, to do a reassessment, like, you know, we made a change, and I feel like it's our responsibility to reassess that change and see how it's going for everyone, is that a directive that we would give? Or is that something that just happens, like, on a regular basis, at the end of the year, you guys reassess how everything's going? That's my question.
So I guess that depends on what you mean by reassess, if you're talking community survey.
I guess I'm talking about more than just anecdotal, like, oh, I've heard a few teachers say that this works better for them.
Yeah, so I mean.
I'm talking about, like, some data that we can look at, I guess.
So then you could look at.
Could you look at attendance data? You could play a test.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
Breakfast sales.
Breakfast sales, you could look at that, all of our K two schools start on time, because I haven't had one K two principal call me this year complaining, the kids are getting here at nine-ten, do you know the bus came in at nine-twenty, it was, you know, it's a half hour late, none of that has happened this year, none, they all are there. So the instructional time, I mean, it might be held, but the instructional time, if you looked at how many, over the course of a week, how many minutes did K two gain over the course of a week of instructional time for the kids?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't think it's.
But I guess I'm looking to, to talk, to hear from teachers and parents, because that's who we heard from when we made the change. Do you know that, I mean, maybe I'm a lot off.
So I think, I, I, so the survey that we gave was about the proposed change, so I think the issue that we have right now is that you don't have baseline data, it doesn't mean you shouldn't go out and collect baseline data, but we don't really have baseline data.
Okay, well, then that's what we need to do.
And, but we do have, we do have data from the beginning of the year, the mid-year, and the end of the year on multiple data points, such as instructional time, such as breakfast sales, such as number of bus runs, you know, those types of things.
So maybe this is a different meeting then, but I think it would be really interesting for us to see that data, like, side by side, and then maybe from there, talk about how we want to access some feedback from community and parents. That's probably a separate meeting.
Yeah, you might, it might be, one recommendation I might make is maybe putting together, like, an overview of pre-change, post-change, kind of on certain data points that you think will be valuable to the community, and then asking for specific feedback, because the reality is, the school that had the biggest time change was Wentworth.
Right.
And so the change for us after the compromise wasn't so much about the, the benefits, the medical benefits of changing the start times, it was more about the efficiency of the two runs.
Right.
Because at the high school, students are getting there at the same time, pretty much, so only if you're, if you're a student who drives yourself or your parent drops you off, you might be realizing a benefit from the change in the start time, but for kids who ride the bus, they're not.
There's no change, they're getting there.
They're getting there, yeah.
I also think it's important to be cautious and to understand that this was year one of a change.
I'm not looking to change it.
No, no, I know that, but I think, I think, I think even, like, how we approach getting that data, which I think is very important to get, I think there's something to be said for year two being a really good year to do that work, rather than trying to evaluate year one, when there were some wrinkles that might still be fresh in people's minds, that might skew how they might report out on stuff. But I just think, I mean, I think it's good to let something evolve over more than one school year before we.
Yeah, and to know that there will be wrinkles in September again.
What's that?
There will be wrinkles in September again, there are every September.
Oh, for sure, September's probably not a great, great time to evaluate anything in education.
So I have a, I have one more, I have one more question I wanted to bring up, and I'm sorry, I missed the very beginning bit of this, so it might not be relevant, but I was wondering if there's been any work done, or if there are plans to do any work about, I know we can't do a district homework policy, but some consistency in homework across the, I guess, at least phase levels. Just anecdotally, like, I remember when Grace was at Eight Corners, some kids had homework, some kids didn't, now, no, I think, I think it's like a no homework policy. Wentworth, I feel like some kids have, like, two hours a night, and other kids have, never have any ever, and I just been, I've been doing a lot of reading on whether homework is in fact beneficial, other than like, reading and math fluency, so I'm just wondering if there's gonna, if there's any work being done on that, like, topic. And I assume that would be phase level, right? Because I mean, what's good for high school isn't good for.
Two things, you could have a homework policy, so you could choose to do that, and the second piece is, I think that fits in with the values conversation that we, we talked about in the beginning, Hillary, before you came, I think that really is some big work we need to do, like, what is learning? Do we have a common definition of learning? Like, what is homework? Why do we give homework? How much do we get? You know, I think that's.
And there is a guideline, but it's not a policy, right? That ten minutes per grade, so like, if you're in fifth grade, fifty minutes.
That's not.
That's ridiculous, not a homework for a fifth grader. And then goes to soccer, and then has dance.
And do people include their reading time in that fifty minutes, or is that above and beyond? So I think that there is a lot of consistency.
So I guess, I'm, I'm just curious, though, because I feel like a board-level policy is taking away a lot of the expertise that you guys have, even if we checked with you, you know, like, I don't want to go in and tell a teacher how to teach, so I guess I'm wondering what the, the middle ground is between that and, and having a little bit more consistency for families? But that sounds like that might be a separate conversation also. Sorry, Lisha.
My question was for Diane about the, I think the next steps was about reassessments and, and what that means, are you, were you saying that currently, students are able to retake tests and quizzes, is that?
Right, that was one of the outcomes of last year's work, and so one of the things that has come up this year is, and again, it was more prevalent in the teacher surveys, was, for example, if a student got a ninety on an assessment, or a ninety-five, they still really wanted that hundred, and so they would be going back to see a teacher during RISE to be able to reassess, and from a teacher's standpoint, that, that didn't necessarily always feel like a real need to reassess, if a student is able to demonstrate that they have the crux of the body of knowledge.
Thank you.
I have one last question about that as well. When it showed the grading system, and there's a very large discrepancy between how happy the parents are and how happy the teachers are, is that because we're sometimes harder on ourselves, or is there something that we can do to increase the level of satisfaction with the teachers and the grading policy, the grading practices in the system?
So I think part of that had to do with the fact that it was a significant.
So I think part of that had to do with the fact that it was a significant change for the teachers again, right? And so they were sitting in the seat of, you know, being on that front line of, here's another change that I need to become accustomed to and figure out, right? And so I think it will be interesting, you know, in year two, how does that kind of flesh itself out?
Well, plus I was thinking, is it statistically significant? I mean, it was a, there was a difference, but, you know.
Well, thank you to you guys for doing that work. This was great. It was interesting. What a great work.
Thank you. We have lots of guests coming back.
Yes, we do.
We'll just take a quick reassess to, you know, figure out.
Thank you to you guys. Because the way you did the surveys and anticipated them into your decisions and then, that's it, the surveys, the difference in your decision was really, I think. I'm sure it was to the teachers, I can't speak for them. Yeah, I'm sure it was the same. But I, but speaking as a parent, that felt really, that felt really empowering.
But I think that's like, that's what we should be doing.
Absolutely, I totally agree with you.
It's not like what.
Shared decision making.
It's like, what's the climate, right? And what are we running for, ready for, and changes at a different time, right?
It's a great process.